Do that. Well, let me tell you. Not real tight about this.
You know it is.
Okay. All right, is that okay? I make those changes.
Accept or reject.
Oh, okay, any bid, okay, very good. Oh, okay, all right, we'll take care of that then. All right, folks, it is seven o'clock, so we're gonna call the meeting to order. And we'll start with the President's line.
The President's Legion's to comply on the United States of America and as to the Republic, which is hands on action under our indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Right. And we will start with public concerns and Roger, you're up. And Lori needs to come sign in, she can do that in a minute.
Couple of questions. We had the boil advisory. You guys, I guess, put it out on Facebook. Uh, I was in friendship work and I didn't know nothing about it. Then I find out Monday afternoon or whatever, we've got a boil advisory, well, nobody. It leaves it, nobody shut off the ice machine, nobody knew about it. So if we know you got a boil, we would shut the water off the feed.
Right.
Well, it was too late. I mean, I'm sure the word got out sooner, but.
You need to join Hyperreach so that you will get texts like that, you go out.
Is there a way we could get a text?
Yes, absolutely.
If I can get a text, I can't text out, but I can get the text.
You need to go to the county website, ripleycounty.in.gov. And on the front page, on that very first page, I think it's on the left side on that page, you'll see a link to Hyperreach. Click on that, put in your phone number and your, I don't even know if you have to put your name in there, I think you just put your cell phone number. Yeah, you'll get, yeah, you'll get emergency warnings.
At least if I would have known it.
Yeah, I know. And we've had some others telling us the same thing, and that's what we've been telling them, you have to get on Hyperreach, you, you know, that's the way you're gonna get it. You know, we put it out on our Facebook page and on our webpage, but nobody looks at those things.
Okay, that was just curious.
And spread the word on that, please, Roger, tell the rest of the Legionnaires that.
It happened like three months ago, we didn't know about it, well, these filters, it's three hundred eighteen dollars a pop.
Oh.
Well, you know, well, then this time, the word's out, gonna be out Thursday night at the Legion, you know, if you guys hear we got a boil of water, let's shut the water off through the ice machine and shut it down.
Only right here, Hyperreach. And you, you sign up, of course, on, you can, you can, you can get the different.
All the others to get signed up too, and by the way, it is on your water bill, at the bottom of your water bill that nobody reads, but it's there, and it's been there for a long time, hasn't it?
It was for several months, and I think we took it off last month because we had so much else to put on there, but when we have room, we put it on.
Yeah, when they have room, they get it back on there, so, yeah, spread the word, though.
Because I know some of the guys knew.
But they didn't think. Yeah.
We can shut her off and then turn the machine off, and we're good.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I just. That's what I wanted, all I needed to do that.
Alrighty, thanks, Roger, have a great day. Lori, you got something? Nope, just, just here. Sure, you're funny. All right, well, then we'll move on to the consent agenda, and everybody got minutes, anybody got anything to add to the minutes or any corrections? Had a couple of clarifications early, but I think those are all good now, so. And then, uh, so we'll waive the reading of the minutes, and we'll adopt the pre-read minutes here, and in just a minute, we'll do it with everything else. Uh, department reports, Ben's not here from Rescue, but we'll move on then to, um, Randall, you had a couple of things on there that I think you need to kind of, uh, talk about, number one was the truck situation. Randall was trying to sell or trade the truck in and wasn't getting anywhere, so we did decide to go ahead and we're gonna, we're gonna post it. Lynn's got a couple of corrections that I'll make, and we'll try to get that posted yet this week if we can, and if not, next week, we'll find it. But the bids will begin, I don't remember what the date is exactly, but it's the day of our meeting or the day before meeting. What's it say? Eleven, okay, yes, and then our meeting is on the twelfth, so we will open those bids then, and she's gonna get that posted in the paper, you want to just take care of that? She's got two little corrections there, so, oh, I need to send that, yes, let me just make a note. Okay, I will do that.
Advertise a place, a place, wants a newspaper?
Probably, yeah, that'll be fine, that'll be fine. The other thing I think we should just go ahead and do is the, can you, one of you two, explain the Tom Cassidy, his requests, and just kind of explain it to the group, and then we'll have, get some input from Lynn.
So, I think there's been ongoing conversations with Randall, but then Tom Cassidy reached out to me from like an economic development standpoint and asked about getting sewer run to the property that he has purchased along Highway fifty just beyond Rolling Hills, technically not within town limits from what, he's outside of town limits. He has been told that he has to put in a commercial mound system or septic there, um, because it is a public building, just like three thousand gallons a day, and it's, um, you can think cost prohibitive, somewhere in like the seventy thousand dollars to put in a septic system, so he was asking about being connected into sewer, um, for the town. Rolling Hills is not on sewer, there is no sewer line down there because of, um, correct, Rolling Hills is not on sewer.
There's one highway that is, but that's it.
Yeah, but there, um, so there's not sewer because of the rock. Um, so, he had said there was some line there, and I did some talking to Mike Holman and Randall, trying to figure out what was going on, and he said, Mike Holman said there was a line that he put in when he worked for Roy Holman, which would have been sometime in the eighties, maybe about eighty-five, for Dutch Pride. It was for Richard Lingrich, it goes somewhere, he wasn't exactly sure where it goes, thinks it maybe comes up for the manhole at Abden Drive, is that right, Randall? But we don't know, we don't actually know where the line is, it's forty years old, and for what, like, Randall's not real, it's a private line, it is not maintained by, like, Richard Lingrich put it in. That property has all changed hands, we don't know where the line is. Randall's not very comfortable putting that line back into our sewer just based on it being forty years old, it's been abandoned for twenty to twenty-five years. And so, anyway, you know, it's not our line, it's not, you know, but I didn't, didn't know what our response backed him from a, just tell him no, do we, like, if he can investigate that line, have it snaked and take ownership of it, can he, if he takes, like, responsibility for that, like, I just don't know what to tell him.
So, what, what is he doing?
A makerspace, so, a makerspace, so like where they'll have like equipment and tools in there, he has one down in Friendship, that's all for woodworking, and then this one is going to be for like pottery and stained glass, and so he's got all the equipment to do this stuff, and then people come in and rent, um, time in this to use the equipment and.
Does that, does the real estate, but town property, or is it completely outside?
Definitely outside.
Yeah, go through three properties to get this down.
To get to our sewer.
Yeah, to put to a connection.
But Rolling Hills is within, it butts Rolling Hills property, right, and Rolling Hills is within town, right, is that correct?
Nobody butts up to, um.
Oh, Rolfs, Rolfs.
Rolfs.
Rolfs. So, okay, so, there is a way, first, you can't tell him no, if you don't want to have anything to do with the project, the other thing you could do is just put all the costs on him. If he can figure out how, like, if he gets all the easements and he pays for the line, that you'll take it on at that point. You could set the requirement, if you want, like, the old line refurbished, or if you want a new one, you probably would just want to put the new line in. And that way, all the costs is pushed on him, you do have an additional customer if you want one, um, you'd have to figure out, like, you could have that he maintains the line, but sometimes what happens too is, I don't know how much, I don't know where this is, so, if there's any other development where other people could possibly look on to it, he can read, move some of, I mean, you could reach an agreement with him where he would be reimbursed some of those costs if new people tap, so I, it just really depends on financially what you can do and what you're willing to do.
Well, given that we are wrapping up, or Korean Associates, Lisa Vandenberg, are wrapping up that utility study, and we've already gotten some preliminary numbers from them in the five million range on sewer things, need to be fixed. I'm just not, I, I, I don't want to take on another line, I guess if he would, if he was gonna agree that it was his, and if he could prove to us that it was clean or it was viable to use, there weren't leaks and all those kinds of things, I might be okay with that, but, um, it just seems really risky to me right now, it seems risky because you don't know what's in that line, and he starts pumping stuff, and that ends up in our lift station over there, and it messes up our lift station that we just spent, how many tens of thousands of dollars a year or so ago, you know, trying to fix it. Randall, need your input on that.
I don't want.
You just don't want to mess with it, okay?
You, you could tell him that the town is in a position at this point to do that because of.
Because of all these other levers.
I'm almost positive he won't get all the easements.
Yeah, okay.
I guess the pipe that's in the ground, none of it's.
After forty-five years?
It was a handshake deal and, but I'm, there may be easements, but I, you know, I.
Well, the thing is that that property's changed hands a couple of times, yeah, since in the last forty-five years, so. Okay, I think just telling that, do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay.
So, do we tell him if he wants to run a new line, that's okay, but he's not gonna tie into that all? What am I, what am I telling?
Want him to connect it all?
Time to come for them, whoop.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's, I think, I think the answer to him is no, but if he wants to come back to the board with like a plan on how he's gonna pay for this and what it is, they might, what he's gonna do, we might reconsider. No to tying into that existing line, but if he wants to propose a different plan, come to the town board.
Okay, all right, then I'm gonna make a motion to that effect, I'm not gonna restate all that.
All right.
All right, all in favor? Aye, all right, very good. Uh, Joe, anything from you? We saw, how, how, well, how about, I didn't get anything here on, um, on the nuisance properties.
Nothing new, I got the guy, I made plenty much more stuff up. It's probably the newest development.
Okay, all right.
Everything's been cut, the grass is cut and everything, it's just like, get rid of some junk here and there.
Yeah, there's some junk, I think it's more than here and there, I think it's more there, everywhere, can we change that? All right.
I did.
You're gonna continue to work on that.
And still a football trailer, and I'm working a credit card fraud case and, uh, domestic battery, um, there's, there's stuff going on.
Doesn't sound like what I really want, but, okay. And then Holly, your report, there are a couple of things that I think you probably should address, can we just, you know, we just want to tell them about the comprehensive plan to start, and then you can go on and talk about that.
So we awarded the comprehensive grant, comprehensive plan grant from Oprah two weeks ago, and, um, we're just waiting on the paperwork to be able to sign that, um, we've heard from HWC, because we've gone through the whole process, essentially procurement, but like interviews, so, um, they are aware that we've been awarded, and as soon as we get the funding, we'll start on that process with them. They are going to be in town on Thursday. Renee and I are going to be at Carmel at that redevelopment association site visit, um, you're gonna be gone, but they asked about if somebody from town would be able, they're gonna be here, county stuff, and wanted to hear from county officials about concerns from the town related to the county comprehensive plan. So, um, I don't know if anybody else is available on Thursday, it's like about ten o'clock in the morning.
If we help get the list together.
You get something together.
Um, so, I'll get that to you, and then, I think that's it.
I have not gotten, I, I got a message two weeks ago when they awarded it, that, you know, paperwork will be coming through soon, I'd need the docu-sign, and I had to get the C I, so, I'll keep my eye on that while I'm gone.
Public announcements, you know.
Yeah.
When I, they have, so, it's official, because we only work, I submitted the State Streets and Roads for All, um, grant a grade of forty-seventh time. I think, I haven't heard back from that, so I think it's okay, and it went to the next level, it was mind boggling, um, so hopefully we'll have that money soon, but I shifted the dates because it took basically six months, and, you know, all the contacts at the Federal Highway Administration are gone, and it's all new people, and it was a whole, like, start over, and had to rewrite some stuff based on new policy and all that, so, uh, that's in the, in the works, and then the last thing is, um, Roxanne and Tim Weber and Jeff and I all met with DNR for the Indiana Trails Program Grant, um, a week ago, and then we reconvened, um, at the committee to talk about what trails we can apply for, so in our master plan, um, I T P will only fund independent trails, uh, was at least if they're along a roadway, independent to themselves, so, really, the only thing in Versailles that qualifies for I T P grants are, Versailles Trail one, two, three, and four. Four is the, the bridge that goes, floating bridge over the lake. We are not gonna pursue V three at this time, that's the one that runs, uh, over the hill from Cliff Hill Cemetery along the lake, it's gonna create like a second loop, but our goal right now is to push people from the park into town, so we don't want to give them a bypass, and we also haven't, um, requested from the park, uh, a site change request. That is in process for V four, because there's, it's a trail going through the park, so it has to be approved, um, by state officials at DNR, and right now, there is not, there's an interim director of DNR, there's been a ton of shuffling, and so, it's kind of up in the air whether or not we'll have an answer on that, but we're gonna go ahead and apply and have the, uh, letter of support from the Versailles State Park. Garrett and Alex have been a part of these meetings, like, when we've discussed all that, and then we also want to apply for V one and V two, which would connect, um, basically at the kiosk, and then pop across the road through the woods up to Tyson Street, and then V two would connect at the switchback of the current connector trail, and come up through the woods, kind of past the old pump house and up to Tyson Street. So, V one, V two, and V four, um, and it's approximately two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars is the total project cost, we would be, um, eligible for eighty percent match and grant of that, so we wouldn't need to put up forty-five. Um, I've got sixty-five secured, so we've got enough money to support that, if I have permission to apply for I T P grant back to the town.
There you go, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, and then last thing, this just came today, uh, we got a letter from DNR, um, they are recognizing the new National Historic District, or National Historic Register, properties at the state fair this year, and we have two free tickets for the Town of Versailles to the state fair, if anybody would like to go. Um, it is on the ceremony, or the presentation is, uh, Thursday, August fourteenth, and it's at the Amphitheater there, and there will be a presentation of certificate, um, to all the National Historic Register properties, and so, the square is a new district on the register, will be recognized there if anybody would like to go.
I've already bowed out, so one of you two guys can go.
Why are you working?
It's a Thursday.
Well, it'll be on a Thursday, so.
Hard time to commit to.
Yeah.
It's a very hard time.
It's all right.
To, uh, so.
All right, but just let her know.
We don't have to go, you know, we're right to go, accept the.
All right, any questions?
They'll mail it if we don't go, so.
Yeah, okay, all right, then we're gonna move on, and we'll go ahead, and I'll entertain a motion then to accept, um, the board minutes as well as the reports. I'm just asking for somebody to make the motion.
So move.
Very good. I'll, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, we're done with that, we've already paid this claim, so we're good, all right, we're into old business, and Lynn, I think I'll let you talk about the tap fees and that, that public notice that we'll need to, um, yeah.
So I had emailed a proposed ordinance and a proposed notice of public hearing, so basically Roxanne and Randall put together, um, kind of just spreadsheet of what actual costs are for these tap fees and with or without a road bore, and I kind of rounded up when I did this, it was like, we did the math, it was maybe seventeen hundred and change. So I rounded up to eighteen hundred, um, for the greater cost, for the greater actual cost, and if there's a road bore, then it's three thousand because of the additional twelve hundred for the boring costs, or actual cost, so you don't have to keep, as inflation increases, you don't have to keep raising this, because it's either your actual cost or.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah, whichever's more, right, okay.
So the process for this is, because technically we are changing the, like, a utility rate, we have to have the public hearing. So what we would do then is, at your next meeting, if there's not much on the agenda, usually nobody shows up for these anyway, but, um, at your next meeting, we can have the public hearing, and if anybody wants to come in and question the ordinance, why the rates are coming up, there's that discussion. And then you can go ahead and, and at your meeting then to approve ordinance, okay, so what I would do for this meeting, if everybody's on board, is to preliminarily adopt the ordinance, and then authorize me to publish the notice for the public hearing at the next meeting. So move.
So moves.
Second, all in favor, all right, so we, that, we'll do that, and then that, we'll plan to have that meeting, I think, at seven P M., which is at the beginning of our regular August forward meeting, okay? All right, very good, thanks, Lynn. Um, all right, the league adjustment policy, I know Sarah's got a few questions and concerns, and I do too, and maybe we can kind of move through them kind of quick, do you have your list um, in your head, okay, in your head, that's, that's good, that's a good list to have, you're young. Okay, and Bailey does a lot of the billing stuff, so she's the one that would be dealing with this, so share your concerns, and then we'll kind of talk, and then we can make some adjustments.
So, first, on the, um, where to request the adjustments, I don't think Randall wants a letter at the water plant to request an adjustment, so that needs to come to town hall.
And I got that marked right there.
Where was I on that?
It is on.
Just taken from Sandy Elko.
Okay, yeah, well, that's what I told Sarah, I, I figured that too, that's, that's the efficient way to do it, Lynn, um, second page, under V one, hand delivery to.
Twenty-eight North Main.
Yeah, Town Hall one twenty-eight North Main. And then do we?
We have an email address that's a general, so it's billing@townoversales.com. That goes to all three of us in the office.
Okay, so they could email also. All right? And then postal delivery is okay at Versailles Utility, heel box four thirty-six, okay, all right, what else?
Um, so we currently don't adjust water, we only adjust sewer.
Okay.
I don't, I'm not saying we can't, I'm just, that's, we have never adjusted water to sewer, because we pay for the water, they use the water, we've always done, we just adjust sewer.
Okay. That's, so the water's running, and if it's running and it's on your property, you're responsible for it, you know, and that, we have to account for that.
Depending where the leak is.
Right, right, that's true, because if it's our leak, then, then, then that would be an exception, and we would adjust, but generally speaking, we.
That's only happened three times the whole time I've been here, and we've adjusted their bill back to what it should be, so, I don't know if that's, you know, word that in there somewhere, but.
I'm just trying to keep the state board's happy.
Yeah, okay, so.
If they're gonna require something like that, then probably.
Yeah, we probably do need it, you know, that, if, if we're, if the town's responsible for the leak, we'll make those adjustments. And basically.
So typically what we've done is if, if it's our leak, we average the last six months, and that's what we bill them. So for sewer, like, if it is their leak, we average the last six months sewer and change their bill to that. So that they're paying for what they, you, they typically.
What they typically use, okay, that makes sense. Does that sound workable, Lynn? Okay?
See, like, right over here, I know you don't adjust the different toilet, right?
Right, and she did put that in there.
Okay.
And that's most of what I have.
That most of what you had? Okay. Randall, did you have any questions? I had your name on here a couple of places. Well, the other thing we talked, didn't, we did talk a bit about the town council having to make the decisions, and we only meet once a month, so if tomorrow, somebody has a leak, they're gonna wait a whole month before we give, you know, we give the okay to reimburse them or to change their bill, and by that point, their bill's already overdue.
To move our new meters, their leak, if they, if we catch it right away and they fix it right away, twenty bucks is their adjustment. If it's a big, huge leak and we don't catch it, then it gets high.
So could we maybe put something in there that says if it's over X amount, like over a hundred dollars maybe, then the board would need to approve, otherwise, we're just gonna let them deal with it and take care of it, does that work?
Is, is one hundred dollars a good?
What do you think? You, you're the one, you guys do the billing, so you tell me what's.
I think a hundred's probably good, and if we find out that it's not, yeah, we can always.
We could go back and make an amendment to it.
And I can, I can go through the recent ones, uh, Bailey pulled the last few she did, and see what those were, so that we have a.
Okay.
Mind to judge it on.
I'm gonna plan on a hundred unless you hear from us.
Okay.
Is that okay? All right, is there anything else anybody else has on this? At all?
Okay, so we're gonna table this then.
Yes, let's table that, and you can make some revisions, and then we'll do that next month then, okay? All right. And I think the next one's yours. Lynn, do you, what do you think on this noble property then?
I, I didn't receive anything from him, he was supposed to basically provide me with the timeline of, you know, where we at, where we headed, how long do we estimate things might take, I've not received any notification at all. So, and I kind of drove by.
I've driven by about four times in the last couple of weeks, and I've never seen anybody there, and I, I do, I did notice, I think, one door, a storm door was maybe not totally closed, I believe that was closed totally today, I saw that, but.
Yeah, I was looking to just see if, like, some windows were secured and all that, there's still windows that are broken, or at least one.
Yeah.
That's broken, um, so you can handle this a, a couple of different ways, we can, we can have, like, the hearing tonight, because he was very much aware that this is gonna be continued today, and I followed up with an email to him. So we can either go ahead with the hearing, and you can give him a reasonable amount of time to come into compliance, and if he's not in compliance, so meaning it's either no longer a health and safety hazard, or you're impaired now. That, that's my thoughts.
Okay, what would a reasonable timeframe be? Do we just make the decide that?
I was thinking ninety days, quite honestly, just because, I mean, if we're talking about demolition and cleaning it up, maybe you could do it in thirty days, but if you really want to give him a chance, try to fix the, I think, ninety days, and he has, he can at least show. But if you really want to give him a chance to try to fix the, I think, ninety days and he has, he can at least show some substantial improvement, right? So it gives him that ninety days and you reconsider, you can reconsider.
I mean, is there any chance he was doing stuff internally that we can't see?
Yeah, he could be. He talked about.
Building the floor.
Yeah, right. Rebuilding, he was rebuilding the floors and then he was talking about sump pumps, wasn't he, that he was gonna put a couple sump pumps in to keep that water from underneath. But we can't see any of that unless you get out and clear in the windows, which I'm not comfortable doing.
Him, it was his responsibility to provide pictures in that.
Today, yes. So.
He was supposed to come back and show.
Yeah, at least have, have some paperwork.
On your emails or what?
No.
I mean, and all of the attempts at communication with him, the guy's shown up to the one thing, right?
Right.
So at what point have we?
We've done our due diligence. He only showed up, it was already by that point more than a fire, it was a raging fire, right? You're ready to have your hearing to tear the building down. So all of those other ones that we threatened, that's why I'm thinking you just need to pull the trigger on it and it gives him ninety days. Doesn't mean you can't reconsider in ninety days if he's really done something, but otherwise we're not just spinning our wheels waiting.
Waiting, we've waited long enough.
Right, did he, is he just trying to, like, wait?
Yeah. Wait longer maybe. Um, okay, so, so we need a motion to that effect, Lynn, or how?
We gotta do that hearing first, okay. But if you guys wanna do that at the end, just so that you can keep moving on your agenda, we.
Okay, all right, we will.
A whole completely different file.
Okay, so I'm gonna move that down here to the bottom. All right, then, we've got some new things to kind of deal with. Um, oh, we got ordinances too. Yeah, let's do those. You're next.
So this is the one from that, that if you look on the schedule.
Yeah.
And I think we were just updating some things.
Section, I got section, page two, yeah.
Section twenty-eight five. Yeah, so we were, we were changing that to personal property shop being moved and breaks or something.
Uh huh, and that's good. Streets needs to be fixed.
Part two, and during any kind of weather.
Yeah.
Uh, the display of goods, you know, person shall use any street sidewalk or other public place for the display of sale of goods or merchandise or write or fix any signs or advertisements on any pavement without prior permission of town council.
Yep.
Then it was twenty-eight dash nine, it's just cleaning sidewalks of debris required. That was the one that I wasn't going to necessarily mandate because sidewalk maintenance is one of those slippery slope where if it's a natural accumulation and something happens, you're not liable for it. But if you do something thinking you're improving it and you didn't, then you're liable. So it's, it's tough to make somebody to have to do that.
Sure.
So I, I would, yeah, I would just not do anything with that.
Can we back up to twenty-eight dash eight, previous page?
Oh, yeah.
One more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No person shall obstruct any gutter drain man or water meter in any street or from any street if located near the street. Nor shall anyone obstruct a water meter in any manner to prevent it from being read. Okay?
And then I have a question on that, that ordinance because this has come up recently. You know, our new digital meters have an antenna on them and Randall's experienced some of those broken. And I'm not, how do they get broken, Randall? Is it because they get into it themselves or they mow over the lid? Okay, and then, and then we gotta replace the whole thing. And, you know, shouldn't the property owner be responsible for paying for that?
They damage your property.
They damage our property. And I don't, I've looked in the ordinances to try to find something, but.
You don't need it really in there because it's your property that they damaged.
Okay, so we can just bill them then for that? Okay.
But if you want it in there, we can put it in there. It doesn't hurt, but.
Well, if, okay, if it doesn't hurt, maybe let's do, and then we can cite that too. They can't say, well, you just determined that. Okay, so you'll need to, when that happens next time, you give Sarah the bill or how much that water meter cost and you'll need to bill the owner. Okay, very good. That one done? Then do we need to go back then to that twenty-eight five? That was the Brownsburg ordinance. We were talking about um, poles, the erection of poles and stuff. Because, you know, we've allowed Airways Network to come in.
Yeah.
And so. Here, I've got a copy. You wanna look at it? Okay, yeah, she sent, you sent that to us. Here, just look at mine. I go, I just, I just underlined a couple of things that I just wanted probably to clarify, I suppose.
Okay, so Brownsburg's ordinance, so I guess your current ordinance says no person shall erect or maintain any poles or wires on or over any street alley or other public way without a permit used by the town municipal. So that's a permit shall be issued upon showing that public property and public safety will not be in danger. If you, so at Brownsburg's ordinance, it's no franchise shall be deemed to expressly or impliedly authorize the grantee to construct or install poles or wire holding structures within public ways for the purpose of placing cables, wires, lines or otherwise without the written consent of the town government. The consent shall be given upon terms and conditions as the town government and its sole discretion may prescribe, which shall include requirement that the grantee perform at its sole expense, all tree trimming required to maintain the poles clear of obstructions. The grantee shall extend to the town government and its utilities to use of any or all poles owned by the grantee to the extent that the town government or town's utilities use the poles does not interfere with the grantee's use or future planned usage of these poles. The town government shall hold the grantee harmless from any and all actions and damages caused by the placement of town government owned wires and occurrences upon the poles of the grantee. So the nice thing about this is that they construct the pole, you can use it.
Okay.
Or they erect the pole, you can use it. So, um, and you would definitely want written consent, just so you have a paper trail. So it, it's more comprehensive than what you have, so I mean, I.
Put that in there again, add that to the, okay, you're right. Right, thank you. All right. And let's see. And then the second one that you sent us was for the street cuts, and I'm not sure where that is in our in our things, the street cuts. Where it is? In our ordinances, I'm looking. You can find it. But he wins the prize if you can find it fast. It mightn't even be in this part, or maybe we need to add it to this part.
Yeah, you probably need to add.
Add it to that part?
And street cuts are twenty-eight dash eight-two.
Twenty-eight dash eight-two?
Well, on, on your current one.
Okay.
I didn't make changes on that.
Okay, well, it's probably because you sent us this. Because you sent this, is that why? Twenty-eight two.
Lot of brown town holes.
Yeah. And then, and then this is the, this was Columbus, Indiana.
Okay, okay.
And it was.
Actually, we were looking at that too.
Yeah. And so, okay, my first question was in the first part there under scope and my question is to Randall. Randall, do we have any kind of a written application of permit for a permit for street cuts? Okay, we don't. They just kind of give your permission or tell you where they're gonna cut or ask you where they can cut? Is that what kind of happened with? Okay, but, but we had Airways in here and, and did they, they cut a few Airways Network, Trent? Oh, haven't they? Okay, okay, they'd originally thought they might, okay. Okay. So I think, first of all, Lynn, some of these, some of this.
There is an application. I drafted one.
Okay.
For a street. Yeah, I drafted, you guys have one.
Okay, so we're okay with that part. And it says filing it with city engineer and of course, we don't have a city engineer. Um, so I highlighted that part. And they'll need to file that, I guess with the clerk maybe?
It, it's up to you guys. If you want it filed with the clerk.
Yeah, and then Randall can pick it up from there. Don't you think that's best? Keep the paperwork at the.
File it in my office, but Randall approves it.
Well, Randall eventually would get it. I mean, I guess they could. Can you not accept it for him? So, or they gotta track him down? What do you think, Randall? They probably need to come track you down? Okay, all right, then, then let's put the street superintendent there instead of the city, of the engineer. The street superintendent, okay? And then down under number one, I crossed out some language. And that was, this chapter shall not apply to excavations, but cross out, I think, made under contract with or by the order of the Board of Public Works and Safety in this, of the city through its proper officials nor to, and I thought maybe if it said, this chapter shall not apply to excavations for the construction of any private entrances, driveways and the rest of that, approaches connecting. Does that make sense? I'm reading under, and we're still on that first page under number one at the bottom, the last short paragraph. This chapter shall apply to excavations, the next out the rest of that uh, down to nor two at the end of the second line, and then.
It doesn't, it just, it just means that it's not applying to you. So like.
This chapter not applied to excavations made under the contract or by the order. Okay. Well, I thought it meant we need to get rid of the Board of Public Works and all that. That would be town board. Okay, so you'll just change that. Okay, all right, so change it to that then. All right, I didn't answer that. And then I'm asking, is this needed? Number two at the top of that next page, and I don't know why, provisions of this chapter pertaining to bonds and fees shall not apply to work being done by any city, town, municipal corporation or any other county or by any agency of the state or by any special taxing or service district established by law, provided that such entities should give the, we don't have a city engineer, that would be street superintendent again.
So we can but basically what they're trying to do is just exempt out, like, if if the town has a project that it's doing, you don't have to apply for your own projects, right?
Okay.
And then if it's another town or municipality or something with the county, that they don't necessarily have to, like, I can't remember if there was a permit fee or not, but
Okay.
Basically, it's just an expedited procedure.
Okay, okay. And then I just had three more city engineers in there in paragraph A on the fourth line down. And paragraph A, the fourth line from the bottom. So those just need to be changed to street superintendent. I think we're okay on that. And then under number one, the last, at the very end of that, it says city engineer and that'd need to be changed too, but I thought that was okay. All right, I'm doing all the talking. Who else has things they need to throw in? And then, um, okay, in paragraph five, city engineer three times. Beginning, or first line, second line, and then about halfway down on the left there. And Lynn, I can give you this if you want, just give it back to Dana or whatever, she'll do. Your things, what's that? You hush. All right, and then city engineer again, under the next paragraph A.
That one's easy enough.
Yeah. You can just pick those up. Okay, um. So the next part, I just wrote a note on that next part, starting with number one, it looks like through three and whatever, this is pretty specific. Can we eliminate or combine some of it? I don't know.
On the permit application?
I, I don't know, is that on the, the application itself? Oh, it's saying two thousand dollars for this for separate. Uh, five thousand dollars per block, five hundred dollars for each pole installed. I don't know, it just kind of goes on and on. I guess being specific is good usually, so.
So I, I'm trying to remember what I don't think you had issues with exactly everything that you had in there. I think it was just cost. This is like taxing my memory here, but it was like cost were a concern. Just to see what other people were doing.
Right.
What was reasonable and just.
Yeah, exactly.
Needed to update it.
Right, 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 right. You know, just in case they, you know, you know, we have situations here where, and this happened just what, five or six years? How long goes it been, Joe, that the firehouse? The water line blew up in there, they turned that back on, remember that? Probably been seven or eight years. And they thought, you know, we don't have exact in, in a lot of cases, especially in this oldest part of town, we don't know exactly where those water lines and things are. So Kevin thought it was like right here and he told Mike, dig right here, Mike dug there and so, you know, we, we don't want that to happen. We don't want to be responsible if you know, if it's something major that they get in and, and mess up some infrastructure that, you know, we want them to be liable. And I think that's where that, everything, you know, I think that's where this all came from. A T C board, yes, they did, threw a sewer line out by the Napa store and we didn't know that for what, Randall, a year, couple of years? You know, we had no, we hadn't any idea. And then it got to leaking pretty good and that's when they discovered that. So, and of course, by then, they wouldn't accept any responsibility before it because their work was long done, you know?
So one of, one of the things that we may have been looking at this for the street permit is they tell you how to come up with the, how much the bond should be.
Okay, right.
And I know that came up.
That did come up.
Project on what we charge. So I think just like some instruction on, on that.
Okay, yeah, that'd be fine. I think we ended up, did we charge him a thousand dollars or something, maybe, maybe two? I can't remember. Do you remember that, Trent Lindell? Okay, it was, yeah. Yeah. Oh yeah, we need a little of that. And then other than that, I got some good, it's good, good. And so I see city engineer, so if you can just go in there and type in, find all the city engineers. Yeah, and then Board of, Board of Public Works is another one, because that comes up over on.
So the Board of Public Works.
And safety.
Yeah, but technically in the statute, that is you guys.
Yeah, so we can leave it there?
Yeah, you.
Okay, we can leave it there.
I'm gonna change it to the town so that it makes sense.
Oh, okay, all right, that'd be great. That'd be great. And I think that's the only, that's all I had on that whole bunch of stuff.
And then, um, trim up that section one, are they giving all the exceptions just for sense?
Okay.
Is everybody okay with the rest of it? I mean, what I'll do is I'll just put this in a in a draft form where everything's put in the one ordinance.
Okay, guys, send it back and, yeah, we'll look at it and, okay. All right, and that was all we had this month on ordinances, right?
Yep.
All right, and then next month, I guess, we'll try to do subdivisions. Randall, I have a note here, you were gonna check with Lori on specs. We wanted to add something about, need to add, the developer must install sewer lines, water lines, stormwater drainage sidewalks and adequate street lighting. And I know we've had trouble over in Harvest Ridge with that drainage. Those, you know, they put those for storm drainage and they're all falling apart and we're having to replace them all. So.
You heard he said the specs are long gone.
Okay, you got them still then? Yeah, we probably have to have those.
So, and part of that's gonna come under, or most of it's gonna come under the jurisdiction of the county with the building code.
Okay. How do we keep them from letting them put those kind of drains in? It don't work. Now. Okay.
I mean, that was, that kind of goes into one of the other things in the new business with multiple, multi-family housing ordinance that the county sent over. You can't ask them to change their ordinance. And then they, they're supposed to go through then that whole reevaluation of it. So if you don't like the way the subdivision ordinance is written.
Yeah, okay, so I need to look at the counties. Okay, let me make a note.
But we like request that they adopt additional parameters.
We request it.
But they're not obligated to do it. We requested, we just attention. This, yeah, so, so basically, the way the procedure is supposed to be is when you do an area zoning board away. zoning board away. The, um. The county basically is jurisdiction at that point, the county passes all the ordinances. But like, it's like when we had to do the, what was it, uh, the zone change with Shane.
Oh, yes. Right.
As it's changing the actual ordinance. For the actual zoning, then you guys have to approve it. So you could actually. Request them to make some of those changes. If you want the town of Rosales to be a more.
A more stringent.
Building code, you can ask them to amend their ordinance, but.
Okay. Yeah, we might wanna talk about that later. Got a few things that, that have kinda popped up here recently, so. Okay. Alright, so we don't really need to do anything with that one then. Good, we gained a month. So, do we wanna tackle this next bunch in August? What am I gonna do? We're getting close. That one for June, yeah, that's what she's talking about though, but we just are gonna fall under that. What do you? Have something else you wanna add to that? Yeah, so we'll just scribble that out. We won't mess with that one. So then what was originally gonna be July. And August, I mean, we can do part of it, do a couple pieces, let's just do a couple pieces of it. What do you think? Okay, so how about if we do, it's chapter thirty-two, traffic and vehicles. And this first part's under article three, and I just, my note said, we're thinking the same, section needs to be updated. So, I mean, you know, it was written probably back in. I'm guessing seventies. They're gonna pay a fine of three dollars for violations. Um, I don't know, you gotta read through it to get back to where we were. If not, you get an additional fine of one dollar. The owner of a vehicle in violation of the provisions of article two in this chapter, or any other ordinance of the town governing, non-moving violations. Pay a fine of three dollars. I'm sorry, I'm laughing. It's twenty twenty-five. Who gets anything for three dollars? Um, and then, uh, for such a violation of the clerk treasure within fifteen days thereof, but if not, then an additional fine of a dollar per day until paid. So if they're parked in violation, I guess, and we don't really have that very often, but. So I don't know, do we, I don't know. We just really simplify that and say, you gotta park in violation, you pay, you know, ten bucks, twenty bucks, whatever, and. You might need to read through that one.
So I, I think, yeah, I, I think the one on that one is you need to update your, your fines.
Yes.
So, we just need to, and, and that's gonna just depend on what you think is a reasonable fine. Um.
For having a car parked.
But if it's more convenient for me to spend thirty dollars, thirty-three dollars, thirty-five dollars a month to legally park cars, pay the fine. I would do it.
Okay.
So that's where, that's where, well, you need to make it so it's more of a deterrent so that they don't, you know.
Okay.
It's not just an inconvenience.
So, Joe, how many illegally parked cars have we had in the last couple of years? Let me guess. Well, I mean, that you would. Have you had any issues with somebody wanting to park their car? Illegally, I guess that's like.
You live on Main Street where there are no signs of their vehicles.
Yeah, and they park up.
Like a bike which is on Main Street where there's like no.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Thing, I didn't know what you, if you were referring to. I have a driveway, but I'd rather park on the streets and use my driveway, cause it's closer.
No, you, I mean, you can do that. No, that's not illegal. No, no.
That's what I'm trying, yeah, not very much.
Okay, alright, so. Can we just simplify that, or can we just change that three dollars to?
I would make it a one hundred dollar fine and then five dollars a day until paid.
Okay, there you go. I'm in agreement with that. Anybody else gonna agree with me?
I agree.
Okay.
Is that payable to the town marshal?
No. No. Remember, you're being recorded. Oh, yeah. Okay, alright, and then that was all there. So, we just.
Speed limit on here too.
What's that again?
It said the speed limit ordinance of the town, it's a twenty-five dollar fine.
Oh, it's.
In order to do that, it, it is my understanding. That it's almost like a deferral from a regular ticket you need to keep track of. You know, who you give that deferral to and who you haven't give it to yet, and now that we don't have a town court.
You should be able to file on.
Or just D I C code.
Okay, so.
A little bit, and it was, it was very much more difficult.
Okay. So do we need to change that? So that, are you telling me they don't pay a fine then, or what are you telling me?
So he writes it into the state.
You pay the state, you pay to the state, not to the town.
So he doesn't write it as an ordinance violation, he writes it as an infraction.
Okay, and then do we still get a cut of that that goes to the state? We don't get anything? Well, considering we don't have the town court anymore, it probably.
So, okay, so there, there's a couple ways around that. For one, we can still file it in. In Superior Court, and I'm gonna assume if it's a town fine, the town's gonna get paid the fine, it'll be paid to the clerk there. But the town would still get the fine. Or any court costs or anything, it's just a judgment. Or if, if you don't wanna deal with Superior Court, then you could also do an interlocal agreement with Batesville, and you could file in Batesville City Court. And it would be the same as if it was Rosales Town Court.
Okay, so we'd actually get. Fine money versus just don't, just them taking all the fine money for the state.
Okay, so then, so then the other thing, so the convenient thing for filing it under the I C code is you're not paying an attorney. To enforce it.
Okay.
So. That's, that, that's why you're not getting anything, right? Everything's going to the state because the state's the one who's really enforcing it. If you, if you pay me to enforce it as an ordinance violation, it's just like all the other ordinance violations where. Most of them just probably do the ticket, and you can actually establish your own deferral program where.
How many tickets do you write? How many speeding tickets do we write?
So it's probably not what I.
How many, how many should you write?
Well, if I can answer more than once, then I'll, you know, I'm wondering a lot of people.
Okay, alright. You probably don't do that a lot either, do you? What do you think, Lynn? What's the recommendation on that?
I would go ahead. So one thing, one thing, having these still on the books even though they're not used is a deterrent, right?
Yeah.
So the twenty-five dollars isn't a deterrent.
No.
Um, so I would still bump that up to one hundred dollars. I would bump all the fines up to one hundred dollars, and I might see what you can charge for an infraction. It's been a while since I got one. Um, and maybe make it comparable to that, just again, as a deterrent, and if it's more convenient and cost efficient to just write the speeding tickets. As a state violation versus a town ordinance, then go ahead.
Then, okay, yeah, but we may wanna, the, the day may come when we.
Right.
Change our mind on that.
Right.
Alright, are, are you guys okay with that? Just bumping the fines? Okay, we're good with all that. Um. And we're about done. Let's stop on that though, okay? Because we got enough to do tonight yet, two more things, so. Alright, the, just whatever you have time, and if you're swamped, we can push that off, we can push that out till. Um, September two, if we need to, okay?
Well, I can get these updated.
Okay.
In his last words, that shouldn't be a problem.
Well, just do what you can do, and, and we'll be okay with that. Alright, next. On our list is the, it's actually multi-family housing ordinance, and this is from. The county, yeah, and I'm interested in your thoughts, and then I have some thoughts too, so.
So. Basically, what, what the, the county did is they made. Multi-family housing special exceptions. The nice thing about that is with the special exception, if they're gonna give you notice that. Somebody's applied for a special exception, you at least know about it as opposed to now when. They just issue building permits and you may never know. What's been submitted. So that's at least the most thing, they're supposed to give you notice. You don't necessarily have. Control or final say under the situation.
Right, but we can voice our concerns.
Your concerns.
Right. Okay.
So I. I mean, I don't really have a problem with what they did. It would have been nice if they would have asked for input prior to this. But at the time they were doing this, I'm not real sure if everybody truly knew what was all being spent on all.
And give Josh one too, I made copy for you. So, there are a couple things that have been brought to my attention that. Um, I just passed out the table, and this table is what. This is what they've changed, for the most part, and, um, Jeff French and I had a conversation here a couple weeks ago. Um. After the B Z A meeting, I guess, and he kinda was explaining to me, this is what they've done, this is why they've done it, and they were trying. To simplify. Uh, the multi-family housing stuff, which you can see where I've highlighted and I've Xed out some stuff, so basically. It used to be that they would need minimum square footage on the lot area, you'd need fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty square feet. For the first two units, and then it was an additional twenty-five hundred square feet for each additional unit beyond that. But they've taken all that off, and now they're just saying you just need the fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty, okay? Now, they've left that on, is that right, Lori? Do I, do I say that right? Okay, and the same thing then for the minimum lot area. And then when you get over to the next comp for the minimum living area square footage, they did increase that, which I was glad to see that. Basically, that worked out to about three hundred and thirty-three. Square feet per unit, and they've increased that just an even five hundred, you know, uh, square feet. But then when they get into this mi- maximum lot coverage for the percentage of a lot, this is like. Pretty damn confusing to me, and I was a decent math student, um. And I made good grades in math, I was pretty good at it. Now, granted, I've lost a little of that, but. They're saying sixty percent, but the way they have to figure that now. Is that they have to figure the square footage of the lot first, so they need to, to know the measurements of the lot, and they have to do the math to figure out the square footage. And then they have to go back and they have to figure out the square footage of the setbacks around the lot, so the. Front of the lot is a twenty-five foot setback, the back of the lot's a twenty, or I said that backwards, no, I didn't. Twenty-five on the front, twenty on the back, eight on the side, so you gotta do calculations to figure out what that square footage is. And you take your total square footage, subtract out your, um. Your setbacks. And then you gotta multiply that by sixty percent to know what. Piece of, how much you can actually build, okay? And they call it a couple things, I've, I, it's been referred to as just development and also hard surface, Jeff called it hard surface. And to me, that just seems like a, a whole lot of math that. Not sure that that simplifies. Things. Oh, okay, sure. They got rid of the plus part, yes.
Decreased what was required for that.
Oh, did they?
It was twelve hundred for the first two.
Yeah.
Twelve hundred for the next two, so that'd be twenty-four hundred, whereas now it only requires two thousand.
Okay.
Then you're adding on, um, it would have been an additional. Four hundred, so again, to admit. I mean, eight hundred, whereas now you would have been at twenty-five hundred, so then until you get over six, they decreased.
The requirements.
Require, which, I don't know why you're encouraging that in a multi-family housing. So, the one problem you have is right now, if this isn't a special exception, you're under status quo, and you're not gonna get notice. So my thought was. You can go ahead and approve this. And then ask them to relook at it, cause you need to be like, if it's a special exception. You want that to act as soon as possible. That's what I was thinking.
Okay.
Get that into.
It's a special effect, or the special, yes, okay, exception in, into effect immediately. Okay.
Now, it, because what I'm afraid is gonna happen is if you set, if you send this back. So it's like ninety days seems to be the trigger, so if you send this back to them, they have to like. You know, go through this whole process, but it might be ninety days or more before you get another final version.
Okay.
And they may not even, they may just say, forget it.
Okay, um. I mean, I like the idea that they're, they're not gonna let him use the setbacks and all of that. I, I get all of that. I just think there has to be a little bit easier way of, but maybe not, I don't know. I might have to do a lot of math, check on things. The ordinance.
Figure is not a few letters, the letter says thirty-five percent.
This one?
So it still refers to people.
It does say, you're right, top of this page two, thirty-five percent maximum lot coverage. The other thing that Jeff told me about that lot coverage was that they had looked at a couple of other places, um. Jennings County allows seventy percent, and Jefferson allows seventy-five percent lot coverage. Uh, Durbin and Decatur do not specify anything with lot coverage. Oh, really? Okay, that's interesting too. There's all kinds of stuff that's getting, becoming interesting. Um. Uh, Jeff did say also that they had taken, um, they needed to add back. Into this ordinance. That the single-story, single-family dwelling must be a minimum of nine hundred and fifty square feet. Is that correct? Well. I, I don't know, and here's, the, the other thing that's really.
I don't, when they, what letter are we referring to? Okay, it's not a letter, it's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance, yeah, it's an ordinance.
Okay. And they're only changing this part in here. They're only talking about. Multi-family housing permitted by special exception. So it is like the thirty-five percent maximum lot coverage.
But Jeff is telling me that that's, that they're moving that to sixty.
But they did, they did.
Well, so maybe I don't have the most recent, or maybe.
Well, this is the one that's being sent over for your approval, right?
Yeah, so if we hurry and sign this right now, then it's still.
That's what it sounds like, but this is only a percent.
This is the one that they sent over, right? You've got a clean copy, I hope.
I've got the original copy that they sent.
Yeah, let me take sure.
They copied it for you.
You copied it for me, so. And this is what they signed. Fair enough. Okay, well.
Well, you guys have ninety days to review this, so you don't have to do anything. With it today, so if we need to get our ducks in a row to make sure he's looking at the same thing and. We know what we're talking about, because what you're, what you're ultimately going to do is if you don't want to, you can. Accept it, reject it, or send it back with amendments. So if you wanna send it back with amendments.
Well. I have a feeling they're gonna send us another one with amendments, aren't they? I mean, if they're making these changes, but they're. But it's not in here, this isn't what Mark signed, Mark Horstman. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. That's what I'm thinking. We wanna go ahead and sign it right now. As soon as possible, because it's a special exception. Mm-hmm, because we want, we wanna be notified.
This right here does not apply.
Not that document, no, that's updated, that's next. Okay. Alright, well then I need, um, somebody to make a motion if that's what we wanna do. And since I'm gonna sign it, I'm not gonna make the motion.
We're all three gonna sign it.
Oh, we're all three gonna sign it. Well, let's make it. Josh, go ahead. Alright, second, all in favor? Alright, and I'll sign it, or Kristen Sarah can fill in the dates and stuff. Alright.
It says here Ben has to sign something too.
And it says that Ben has to approve the fire protection.
Yeah.
Okay, does he have, is he on here?
He doesn't have to sign it.
Oh, okay.
So the development plan has to be prepared by an engineer or a expert there.
Mm-hmm.
It has to be designed by a licensed professional, signed by the fire protection plan by the local.
Okay, right. Okay, right.
So I think they were just trying to get some things into effect immediately.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I think.
And, and what, what I would do then is. If you, if you have problems with the current code, like we're just talking about subdivision.
Yeah.
Figure out if you wanna submit.
Does it? Okay, yeah, cross that out, your name. Think I saw that earlier, but I forgot. Okay, well, we'll take care of that, right? Ooh, just got a couple more things and these are all quickies, I think. That's, got all three signatures? There are half, the, you have to sign that, I think. All right, there you go, we took care of that. All right, Tyson fund request, I did send a, um, a, a message to you. Showing you what we are, have tentatively scheduled to apply for. There may be a few tweaks to that, the application's due on the twenty-sixth, I believe. And the tweaks might happen with, um, the amount of money we're asking for community crossings. Because they have lowered that, um, match money from twenty-five to twenty percent. So that's gonna play into it. And the other thing might play into it a little bit is we need to know a little bit more about this Perry Street project. Everything's hinging on Perry Street. And mostly what's gonna come out of our pocket for sewer line repairs or water line repairs and that kind of stuff. You know, they'll pay for, they'll pay for the drainage, um, the new drainage stuff, the engineers and development, but they won't pay for those things. So it's gotta come out of our pocket. But that's kind of where we're looking right now. I have no idea what they will fund. Um, we always list those in order of preference, what we think are our priorities. So if anything's gonna go, it's gonna be that last item on the list, which we're gonna talk about here in just a sec. Okay? Any questions on that? Any, any input, anything else? Is there anything else? Uh, you know, Randall and I have sat down and talked, and Sarah and I have sat down and talked, and Holly and I have sat down and talked, and then we've kind of all three talked and. Um, that's kind of what we've come up with. We think those are the things that we've gotta really take care of right away. All right, practice fields, Ja, uh, Josh, I'm gonna let you deal with that.
On, I have not heard back from Alex yet.
Okay, and I've got my, I've got. Okay. Okay, yeah, we're gonna try to get that detailed out. The other thing I'll add is that I got a call from Brian Linville. Joey Rollins, who is with Ohio Valley Sports, had been in Friday and visited the complex with him, was very impressed. Is very much interested in using the facility. Brian was telling him that we were planning to put in a couple of practice fields. And the only recommendation they had was maybe try to squeeze one of these two a little bit bigger. Because if we could get it to two sixty, that just opens up two more, um, two more age groups, all right? Well, they're saying, let me see, oh, my notes on that. Three sixty, is that what, no, yeah, two, two six. They're, uh, one of our fields is a three-ten, it didn't have to be quite that big, but like the little league field is only. Put it on the back of this, this? No, that's other stuff. Um, anyway, he was thinking, I, I had that in an email, I sent that to you, didn't I? What's it say?
Field one, two-ten.
Will be used for eleven U. Yeah, and so we kind of need something in between there, like a two-sixty. So Josh, maybe you and I can go look and, and, and try to. And, 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 um, Renee, we need to get something between that size and that size is basically what we need.
But it does say ideally three hundred.
Right, this one is three, how many? Uh, you know, I put that in there, but then I got to thinking and I looked back at my notes and he actually did say if we were at least at two sixty. To two eighty, we would be in good shape. So it doesn't have to be quite as big as that biggest field. So I think we should, just should, you know, we need to look at that a little bit. And that, of course, that'll change a quote too. And then, let me just make sure that I'm right on this Lynn, we've gotten one quote. And it's seventy already, so we're gonna need to probably bid that then. We don't, we're not gonna have that much money to work with, we're gonna have to cut something out. This one actually had, um. He was gonna cut out for the parking area and we really talked, we probably wouldn't even try to do that until next spring. Once we have a new budget, we can get a little more money in our park fund.
Do you wanna try to just rebid it, or re?
Well, we wouldn't, we hadn't bid, we just asked for a quote, because we didn't know.
What's the threshold, I read the threshold.
It's fifty, if it's over fifty, we're supposed to bid it.
If you change it, do you think that, like you cut the stuff out, are you thinking under fifty?
A toss-up, we don't know.
Especially with making the field bigger.
Yeah, especially with making it feel bigger, there's probably not, we probably need to bid it.
Bid it, yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll get in touch or we can get in touch with, um, Lori and see if they can get the, some bid documents together for us. I'll put Josh in charge of that, since he's in charge of the. But anyway, um, you know, there's a lot of potential there and I'm, I'm excited. I, and we do have a place where we could, I think we could probably take. Like this field, put it here, and then move this one over to here. So you had a bigger field here, although I don't know if we can get it. We'd be close on that. Say, well, show, show me where.
Do the little field here, bigger field here.
Okay, yeah, I just don't know if we got enough room to do a bigger field there. There's not a whole ton of room there. Be close. And it doesn't have to be as big as that field, so. Yeah, we'll look at that. We'll look at that. Not this, not this next week or so, but we'll look at that later. All right. And then three quickies. So Susan Glazer, who is an architect from Batesville. Um, let me back up. About two years ago, twenty-twenty. Ooh, it's been three years, I think, when we first started a conversation with a gentleman named Robert Palf. Who was an architect from, um, Cincinnati and was interested in, and did a lot of work with, um, historical facades. And so, it's kind of bugged me all these, this time since we bought this building that this looks not at all like the pretty historic buildings around the square. So we've talked about, and we've got leaking windows, two leaking windows out of the three, the only reason the third one doesn't leak is because Jeff broke it while they were remodeling. And he put a new window in. So, um, so anyway, that led us to kind of revisit that again. I've actually had it on the extended Tyson list for, I think, three or four years, and we've never gotten to a point where we could even put it on there. But until this year. But, so we did have a conversation with her, she came over, very energetic. Immediately had a really cool idea, um, which matched up what, with what Robert Pallett said earlier. And that was to create two facades, so the building looks like it's two buildings. Which makes good sense, since this is very different this side than the other side. So anyway, she, we ha, she kind of took a look at it and has made a proposal to us that, uh, she will provide. Um, let me see, create CAD-based drawings, a schematic design with three different options, design development. And detailed find, final design and a three-D rendering. And her estimated price is twenty-seven hundred dollars for everything. Um, I believe Robert Palf's initial. He didn't put it in writing, but initially said, let's start at three thousand. And so we felt like. She, you know, I think she's got some, I think she'll have some cool ideas for us. Um, so anyway, I, I guess we need to decide if we want to go ahead and get that started. My, my thought is, if we get a couple of things that we could share with the public, we might be able to actually. Do something fundraising through the public, maybe go back to a patronicity kind of grant or something like that. I asked Jeff French about that, he said, oh, you may not get. I said, I, I don't expect that we would get as much, but. But there are people in this town that I think would buy into that and make a donation. Um, you know, we will have to find the funds to do it. And, you know, I'm asking, I've got on the Tyson list, you saw that, twenty-five. So we'll see if, if they will have enough money that maybe they can fund that. And, um. Well, I would, I think on that application, I want to add some pictures of the other buildings and then a picture of this too. So when we do that, so. I don't know, what do you think? It's not like we're gonna do it next week. If we do agree to the proposal and sign that proposal. Um, then, yeah, she says she'll start work July fourteenth, we'll have drawings. I think allow two weeks for rendering with final design the twenty-eighth, so by mid-August probably, we would have something. And then at least we'll know kind of what we're looking at, you know, what, what we need to do. So, we had actually, I believe the board, I don't know that for a fact, but I believe the board agreed that we were gonna go with Robert Palf. And then, we don't really know what happened, we just couldn't get back in touch with him and Jeff's tried too, and he's not responding, so not sure what might have happened there. But, you're right. So, what do you think? Jeff's already got a grin on his face, because he didn't want to make. I, I would, I, okay, I'm gonna make a motion.
Yeah, so we're just paying twenty-seven hundred dollars, just for the design.
Just to get some design, yes, to get some drawings and, and then from that point, we can start looking at some cost estimates and, and start. Yeah, we'll get it quoted and we'll, we'll try to, you know, figure out how we can raise some money. And, you know. Yeah, we, we need to cover that ourselves. Do we have twenty? All depends on Perry Street. We are gonna go, we're gonna, we're gonna work, I think, with Rising Sun on that, on the ballfield stuff. Rising Sun Foundation, and hopefully be able to fund part of that there.
That didn't look like an absolutely face.
Because Roxanne said it, it all depends on Perry Street.
Yeah, it does. But, y- you know, some of our Perry Street stuff's not because we're already, you know, halfway through the school, the. You're halfway through the year, that stuff's not all gonna get done now. So we're gonna have budget money next year to help. You know, we've got money set aside, you know, for it, yes we do. We have, what, over two hundred grand, probably? Close, close to that, I think. Already set aside.
Pushed out and pushed out with Perry Street, right?
Yeah.
Where are we even at?
Well, it's staked, which is what Duke said she needed to schedule, and it was staked two weeks ago, Randall, at least. Um, and then. Uh, F and B reached out again, and like, you know, this is staged, you know, and they're like, well, you got that done faster than we were expected, so. So then, um, we're gonna need some more time for scheduling. And then that's the last I've heard, and like I sh- I shared with Roxanne this morning, uh, Duke's. Lineman Union turned down their second contract yesterday, so they're talking potential strikes. Has been continued till mid, mid-month, but they're gonna try to renegotiate, so.
And we can't do anything until the polls are moved. So, it is what it is. Yeah, they've been really good. Yeah, they've been good about, about pumping. And also our engineering firm has been good, everybody's kind of pumping them hard, but. We're not getting there. So.
Is there a time, because other aspects, there was so much time, right?
We have like, I think. Like, two years to clo- close out a C-CMP project. The issue that we're gonna run into, if we don't get this started. Like, that is, like asphalt plants are gonna shut down.
Right.
And we're not gonna, you know, they usually about first or second week of November, they shut down asphalt for that, so.
We don't want Perry Street torn up and gravelled for the winter, so.
I mean, do we think we're gonna get anything done with that this year at this point?
It's starting to look a little bleaker, isn't it? Yeah.
I mean, if we haven't had movement by first of August, then it's looking real. Uh, because there's just a lot that has to be done. For the water, sewer, before the, the road stuff even happens on sidewalks.
Should we revisit that in August, when we know, have a little bit of an idea?
We could, you wanna do that? Because we're not really in a hurry on it, it's just that, I, I think we need to, I, I just think we need to be able to do something. Get some design so that we can do a little more planning. You know, we've got a little, we, because it's gonna take time, it's gonna take time to, to get the money and time to, um. You know, and move, so, okay, you wanna table it? Josh, you okay with that?
You guys are, yes.
Okay, we'll take all that till next month. All right, um, Holly, can we send her a message and tell her we'll wait and make that decision next month? So we're very interested, but that's kind of where we are. All right, and then we have two other things that probably do need to be, these are quotes. And they probably need to be acted on before the winter. And ideally, it would be really nice if we could get them done. Especially the trash cans before pumpkin show. So we got two quotes here, one is to, um, repaint fifteen. Probably sixteen, but maybe it's fifteen trash cans. They were originally painted about eight years ago, we got them in a salvage yard. For not very much money. There are like those cans like we put out here, and what'd you pay, what'd we pay for the ones in the park? Twelve hundred dollars for a can. So we got them and, and, uh, we had a guy paint them and he was supposed to paint. Um, a primer layer and then a, a top coat, and instead, I've found out that he used. A combination primer, top coat. And they've chipped up and they look really pretty, pretty bad. So anyway, twenty-six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, and then we got a quote to put. No, that's not, is that sandblasting them? Is it, okay. Pressure washed, pressure washed. And allowed to dry and prime completely. We had them sandblasted once, but you know, we didn't, the, we did that ourselves, Kevin screwed it, and didn't get all the paint off, so. Anyway, I mean, it's been eight years, I think it's considering. And, um, and I'd like to see that done a week ago before pumpkin show. And then this one is to, um. Stain the pavilion. How many years pavilion now? Is this the third year of it? Yeah, and they will do a, a restain, um. With materials and labor and everything, three thousand twenty-five. Sure, we've got, that one was three thousand twenty-five, so the, the both. Four, three, four, five, fifty, six fifty, for the both of them. Can I find that money?
We probably have that pavilion money in the park fund if we don't need the park fund for fields.
We're gonna need some of the park fund for fields, for sure.
Was that from the same company, right, on the, both of them bids?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
So it's the guy who did, redid the, the new handrail when he painted that, I talked to him about, said, could we have stained that? I asked if we needed to be doing that and.
I'd say most definitely pavilion, and like Joe says, we get his guys do the.
Yeah, I want to see two coats of paint. Can you put two coats on it for me? Okay.
I like painting them in place, I mean.
Well, you have to pull the cans out, you, you would brush them on or roll them, probably. Oh, really? Oh, I don't, okay.
Are you gonna come and supervise?
I could. I won't. You know me. Well, I'll make a look at those when we go back out. Okay, if you paint them. Well, you know, it's.
It's probably forty, fifty bucks a can.
Well, that's, you know, fifty bucks a can, that's what, eight hundred dollars versus three thou, no?
Twenty-five or something.
Twenty-six, twenty-five.
Project I could do with them, it would be a fair pitch.
You guys okay with that idea? Okay, all right, we're gonna let you do that, thanks, Joe. Then do you think we can? Can we, so do we wanna wait to stain, or we need to do stain? Okay, all right, then I'll entertain a motion to accept that quote, and we'll.
While we're gonna get a quote.
Yeah, right, right. Who made the motion? Entertain means I, I would.
I'll make a motion to get done of building stain, I'll take that bid.
Very good. All right, all in favor? Not a lot. What else did we forget?
The Turf Guy finally responded and said he would work on getting a solid date. To get there, but he's short-staffed. So, he didn't commit anything, but he responded, except the first time in three months, so.
I'm gonna give him about three weeks, and then I'm gonna get him with the. I'm gonna give him about three weeks and then I'm gonna get him with the, her fields and they're not on my list. And let you get in here and get this fixed right away. We've, one, one thing I wanted to ask you about that is, what's happened out there is there's a big divot, not even big divot, it's this big round and it's that deep, quite that deep. I mean, it's certainly a trip hazard and we have a, an orange cone sitting in it, because it's over there by that big splint. We've asked and asked and asked for more than a year, yeah, for him to get out of here and get fixed. And, and he's just kind of, the last couple months, just quit responding at all. So I sent a message to him after Holly sent her message yesterday, I sent a message and, and signed it. How more precedent and just said, you know, Holly has been waiting and, and you, I would like you to respond, you know, in a timely fashion to her, and so he did, and finally, he says he's going to at least try to fix it, but. But we're worried about liability, you know, so many trips in that. Well, it should, it should fall under that, I mean, I don't know that we had, we had turf warranty.
Here's the, here's the issue, like Friar did some of the backfill, like when he did the sidewalks to bring it up, and then this guy came in and did like the final.
Finish work.
Finish work with the line.
The base.
Base and the AstroTurf, and so maybe he's like, well, you could talk with your guy who did the film, like, no, like, you, you did, like, he's gonna have to cut the turf open and then like reseal it and like fill the stuff in, like, which is the packing agent. I don't, like, it's the packing stuff underneath of it that needs, that, we must have a sinkhole, and I don't think it's a sinkhole. I, like, I, when those, you think it's a sinkhole? Okay, well, maybe we don't know, we don't know.
As far as like, what I would just do is make sure it's more, like, whether, I don't know the role you're talking about, but. If the comment is fine, or if you can like, you know, if there's an uneven surface sometimes, so like Friar gave it so that you can see what the. So if you take steps to basically warn people.
Okay, we could probably take, yeah, we could probably get some. It's, it's, it's a bait.
Much like gravel and then like another three or four inches of like a lime mix, like with, with gravel in it, that's the packing stuff that they use those big like.
Is it under warranty?
Not under warranty.
How hard is that to pull up?
Oh, why, we're not gonna try, try that. No, we need him to come, yeah, but then you gotta get it back down, that's.
It'll have to be cut and then there's like paint stuff that has to go underneath and like then you have to put it back together and it's like, it's not like just cut it, like you've gotta.
I'm afraid it was like a carpet.
Oh, no, no, it's a little bit different, it is somewhat, but.
I mean, if, if. Like, if we're gonna go cutting, I wanted him to like be the one that, so if something happened in the future, then he would be the one that, like, if he cut it open.
Yeah, I think he needs to come and look at it at least and. And the thing is, he did the finishing work, so he knew when Friar put down his layer, it wasn't finished. There was more to be done and Holly pointed that out when they were laying it, that spot and another spot, she pointed that out, those are kinda uneven. And they just kind of.
Super smooth, I mean, when they ever put it down, I was like, like a little, like, right, and they're like, oh, it all settles, it's fine, like, you know, and, I don't know, like, I've been down to, like. Like roof one twenty-four, and I know there was not. Perfectly flat, you know, and like you go out there and it's like. They didn't get it like perfectly smooth before they laid it down and like then there are places that definitely didn't settle, like into perfectly smooth and like that's, if that weren't there, I'd be like, okay, it's, it's fine. But like, because that one's there, there's like one other one that's kinda near like the clean out for the splash pad and like they didn't get it up underneath like our Cajun drums, like it's supposed to be tight underneath Cajun drums to like support. Those, you know, and like actually when I set pictures to the professional play, they're like, don't you know that these are like not installed correctly? Cause that base is supposed to be up in the sport of it, which.
And do that.
We talked to them about like how that, and they're like, yeah, we'll get it up under there, well, now it's like settled down and so that doesn't have that.
Doesn't have that support, so they're sitting on a post.
Yeah, so like there are just, there are several things with the turf that have just not been. For the finish, like the, it's the polish, it's the stuff that, it's like when somebody does a bad paint job, you know, if you don't have the work, it's like, you know, just kind of frustrating.
Well, we'll keep hounding him and hopefully he'll. Anybody else, anything else that we need to talk about? The hearing, yes, man, oh, okay.
This is Ripley County Economic Development Interlocal Agreement.
Okay, all right, we need.
Same as last year, it's the twelve percent.
If you need a motion, I'll make a motion that we accept and sign this interlocal agreement, economic, Ripley County Economic Development. Second, somebody? All right, all in favor? I, got it. All right, and now, Lynn, we can do the hearing, glad you remembered it, there you go. There's two to sign, I only signed one, so give it back to me, we can go ahead and get him to sign, I'll, I'll get it, you have, that's back. Okay.
Just for like the record or whatever. And then, I'm gonna go ahead, I did propose findings, just to sort of, so we could follow along, makes a little bit. Okay, so since this is sort of like a hearing and. We are, um, being recorded. I'm gonna go through basically your, the proposed findings, just the sort of like a layout for, for the hearing. So the first, the hearing date will be July seventh, twenty twenty-five, um, the meeting started at seven P M, but it's now, what, eight thirty-seven? When we're actually doing the hearing. Mister, Mister Saran is not here, he was, for the record, I know you guys remember this, but. Um, at the last meeting, so he did have noticed that we were continuing the hearing for tonight, plus I did email him a copy, which he did at the meeting, so he was just correct email address to receive notice. Um, so if you look at your packet of information, my exhibit, so you'll see for sales exhibit one. So I'm required by law first to do a title search on the property and that's just to make sure that we have a proper owner notified and to make sure there's no interested parties that are like a bad, if they had a mortgage, that we would need to notify of the hearing. So that is a copy of the title search that shows that the owner of the building is the Noble LLC. Next, we have. The affidavit of, of Doug Amber, this is exhibit two, there was a typo in the original deed, so it's correcting the Noble LLC's name to the correct spelling of it. Um, but it also shows the, the, it's the legal description for basically the property, which we also, this will eventually be a reported order that is against the property. So, just to notify that we've got the proper legal description there. For sales exhibit three is, um, the Notice of Unsafe Building Code Enforcement Order, so basically, I need to build a record that he's had plenty noticed and has received notice at the proper addresses, or at least, we've at least sent it to the proper addresses, so. You'll see, this is the first order that we had, um, for the unsafe building. Requiring that it's gonna be demolished and removed and we gave him, I believe it was thirty days to be able to do that, so that was sent to the Hawthorne Port address in Batesville, which is what the tax statement's being sent to. It was sent to Noble LLC, which at the Buckeye Street in Osgood address, which is where service of process is supposed to be sent according to the Indiana Secretary of State. And then also the email address that was listed for the registered agent, so the registered agent is the official person to receive notice for the company. Um, which Mister Saran did say was the correct email address, so we did acknowledge receipt. So that's a copy of the order, uh, showing where it was sent. And requested, requested, um, act and petition. Next, we have exhibit four. Which is just showing, just like I said, if, if you guys tear down the building eventually, I wanna make sure my eyes are guarded and my teeth are crossed. Uh, that is the email address where it shows that I had Dana email to Mister Saran, copy of that order. Next, you have exhibit five, which is the Secretary of State certified copies indicating with the proper address for the Noble LLC to receive services, um, which is the three fifty-eight North Buckeye Street, and that's just, again, for the record. Also attached is a certified mail. And showing that someone had, it looks like it might be Mister Saran's, uh, signature, but somebody had signed on behalf of the Noble LLC at that address on was. So then I think we also have exhibit seven, which is an email, and this is one that I just added in and it was just a courtesy email from me to Mister Saran advising that the hearing was, I think, continued from May to June. Um, so again, just for the record that he's received plenty of notice, but what's going on here today. Now we get to the good stuff, um, exhibit six, which is the investigative engineers of Cincinnati Inspection Report to say that dated December eleventh, twenty twenty-four, recommending demolition. So the engineer does go through and explains what they've done, what the results of the investigation is. Probably the most important part is page three, where he says concluding opinions. Uh, the opinion is that the building has been vacant for over two years and during that time, the water services to each unit were operable and leaking. Over time, the leaking water services damaged the wood floor support of the building's units and foundations. Since the building units have been vacant, the building has been vandalized and damaged further, including walls and utilities. With the amount of structural damage to the floor structure and foundations, I conclude the building is unsafe and should be demolished. So that was from Mister Jeff Tockers, again, the report was December eleventh, twenty twenty-four. So, since that time, Mister Saran did appear at the last meeting and had indicated that they were trying to rehab the building and that he was to provide a, uh, basically a, like, I don't, I don't wanna call it an agenda, but a timeline, basically outlining what was going to be done when. And he was to have that to me by the end of business yesterday, I've not heard anything from him. Uh, I did drive by today and did not, there were still, I know there was at least just one broken window, so it did not look like there was a lot of construction going on, at least externally. So, my recommendation for the board here. Well, to just go through the findings, um, to find that basically that pursuant to the Indiana Secretary of State, the Noble LLC Company's address and service of process address is three fifty-eight North Buckeye Street, Osgood, four seven zero three seven, and the registered agent service of process is Saran underscore J I at iCloud dot com. That the unsafe building code order and notice of hearing was properly sent by certified and regular mail to the company address and service of process address, assigned certified mail receipt dated April nineteen, twenty twenty-five, was returned indicating proper services required by Indiana Code. Thirty-six dash seven dash nine dash twenty-five. That there, a- aside from the Noble LLC, there are no holders of a substantial property interest other than the company. So there's not a bank or any other lien holders involved. Uh, that the owner, having been advised and having been advised that the owner of real estate was served notice of the date, time and place of hearing by certified mail and email of the owner and that Mister Saran then on, on number four, if you're going through the checklist, has not appeared uh, in front of the hearing officer, which is the board to receive evidence. That the unsafe building enforcement authorities order, which is the prior order that was issued by the board, gave the owner at least thirty days to complete the action required under the order with demolition, remove the buildings on the above premises. That the unsafe building enforcement orders. Authorities order is hereby, you can affirm it, resend it or modify it. So basically, we would be, my, my recommendation is that you kind of impose a final deadline on this so that we just don't keep continuing this out. So my recommendation would be that you give him ninety days to either bring the property into compliance with code or that it will be demolished. And he can bring it into compliance also by demolishing it and removing it. So this would be, this order can get recorded so that if he tries to sell it, any new owner would be made aware of what's going on with the town here.
Okay.
So the next provision is owner must pay our recording fees incurred and postage expenses incurred. And I would recommend that you order that, that the, well, the owner must demolish the unsafe building and remove all debris and level the lot on or before, so that's that ninety day requirement for bringing into compliance. So the one of the things that you can do, so I have it on here, the owner requests additional time, but he's not here to request additional time, so that's not applicable. The owner must provide the following, so you can require him in the meantime, if you want to, to basically do what you've already ordered him or requested him to do, as far as like, um, getting environmental reports or from architects or just a detailed timeline for completion of the work. I would not bother with that because we didn't get it last time. Ninety days is either fully in compliance, he can run it, run it out, or it's completely demolished and he hasn't done either one of them, listen, you'll come in and do something different now. Having said that, if it comes to ninety days and it looks like he's close to having it completed or something, you can extend that at some point, but I would not put that in this order.
Okay, okay.
Does that still making sense?
Yeah, it is.
So then you're required to put in there, in the event the owner fails to complete this work, a demolition order may be issued and bids to perform the work will be solicited from an outside contractor, or the town of Brazil may perform the work. The owner will be financially responsible for the cost of demolition and removal at the bid price or current rates and charges adopted by the Brazil's Town Council for the work performed by the town, and the same will become a lien against the real estate if the costs are not paid in full. You can ask for a performance bond. I, you're probably not gonna get one, so I don't know that I would ask for one necessarily at this point. If he was really working with us, it might be a different story, but you're not getting.
We're not getting much cooperation.
You can also ask for a civil penalty. So your civil penalty can be anywhere from zero to five thousand dollars. What I like to do in these circumstances is do it like a purge order and say, we're gonna ask for a five thousand dollar fine, but you can purge yourself from that fine by completing everything within the ninety days.
Okay, okay. All right, that makes sense.
And then you can set it for a review hearing in ninety days.
Okay.
So that would be what? August, September, October?
Fourteen, that work? Today's only, uh, eight, so that's twenty.
And you do not, I mean, this, this went rather quick today because I didn't have any, anybody opposing me or anybody to cross-examine or anything. But, um, you do not have to have it at your next meeting if you, you don't want to. So if it's more convenient to hold this at a different time, you can, but.
Okay.
The October fourteenth, this is fine.
Okay.
And you can also have the ability to continue it at that hearing too.
Yeah.
And then just by, by law, we have to put that, per requesting judicial review under the section, must file a verified complaint, including the findings of fact and the action taken by the hearing authority with the Ripley County Circuit or Superior Court must be filed within ten days after the date of the storm. So, if everyone is okay with my recommended findings and then. if everyone is okay with my recommended findings and and as we worked through it, I can prepare the findings and then email them to you for signature.
Okay.
Review and signature and then I send them to Mister Saran to get them recorded.
Okay. I think that's what we do, don't you?
Yeah.
I think, I think um, we've tried and tried and tried and we're just not, you know, you know, last month he had all kinds of promises and here we are thirty days later or more than that and nothing happened again.
And quite honestly, all all we needed was, you know, I'm I'm a little delayed, my contractor, just some sort of response. I think you need to be clear at the last hearing that as long as he was working with you.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, honestly, I really don't want to, I don't want to spend the money to it, damn. I'd much rather he put the money into it and fix it up. I really much rather that he hadn't allowed it to get into that kind of condition. But you know, here here we are and I don't guess we have much choice in that. Do we need to make a motion to?
You just, um, you just need to make, you basically at this time, you just need to um, request that I prepare the findings, that basically you agree with the oral findings that I need to reduce that to a writing and then submit it to you for signature.
So moved. All right. Okay, anything else?
You guys, I'm just doing official vote.
Oh, we'll do an official vote, okay, all right, um, all in favor? Aye, all right. My goodness, what a mess this has been. Okay. All right, does that finish us out? My goodness, guys, longest meeting we've had in a long, long time. I guess we all want to go. May I want to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
All right, second and all in favor? Aye. Motion adjourn, or meeting adjourned at fifty-one P M. Oh, my. Yeah. Whenever you can, you know, if you can, I'd really like to see him cleaned up before pumpkin show, so that, you know, end of September, you got a couple months. And if you want to just.